City Council Work Session for the CV's Grand Forks for Tuesday, October 13th, 2020 is now five o'clock with City Clerk please call roll.
Mayor Steve Ender.
Here.
Council President Mark Holston.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Gossel.
Here.
Council Members Clarence Metter.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Rantrell.
Here.
Tim Johnson. Mark Demers.
Present.
Does term. Coram. Number one, discussion on aerial photo and pavement management system updates. Mr. Emery.
Thank you, Council. So, the Grand Forks, East Grand Forks, MPO, they're updating their work program for 2021 and 2022, and they're considering a couple of projects. I guess it'll require some financial support from the City of East Grand Forks. Those would be a new aerial photograph, basically Grand Forks, East Grand Forks, and then also updating our pavement management system. The aerial photo was last updated in 2018. Typically, that has been updated about every three years. And then the pavement management system was updated last time in about 2014. So, would be good to get that updated too, because since that time, we'd had that three-year pavement rehab project where we seal-coated and overlaid, you know, pretty much all of our Batumina streets. So, would be good to get that updated. There is about $92,000 available in federal funds to help pay for these projects. There is an 80-20 split on that fund. So, to get the full $92,000, there would be basically a local match of about $23,000, which would be split kind of between Grand Forks and East Grand Forks. So, about 11.5 per community. Right now, the pavement management system update, federal funds would cover all of our streets, which are classified as our federal routes, which is about 12.9 miles. But the city would be responsible for the local streets, which is about 41 and a half, 41.5 miles. And then we have about 3.9 miles of our state aid system that's, you know, not part of our federal route. So, city be responsible for that. So, we're estimating that at about $15,890. So, in total, you know, for aerial photo pavement management, we're estimating right now, the City of East Grand Forks share would be about $27,390. And in talking to Carla, we could use our state aid maintenance funds for those two potential projects. And then just kind of see you know, too, this has been brought forward to City of Grand Forks Council, and I guess they've kind of approved everything moving ahead with these two projects. So, again, just what we would need from you, the Council, is just, you know, support of these projects and, you know, what the city's share would be. So, I guess with that, I can open up any questions.
If you have any questions from Mr. Emery.
Mayor.
Would the resolution on the imaging be good enough to show the small sapling growing in the middle of 20th Street?
Yeah, I think so. Typically, all of the aerial photos have been typically of like a six-inch resolution. They're actually looking at in the urbanized areas going with a three-inch pixel resolution. So, we'll actually get a higher resolution in the urbanized area. So, that will be good.
You'll be able to see the tree there pretty well?
Yes.
Okay, that's important. I think you feel like this is an important tool in, I know we've had our pavement management plan that's been worked out. We do a cycle of mill and overlay and seal coat, and we try to prioritize according to the need. Is this an important tool in all of that?
It is another tool in our toolbox. It is something we use. You know, last time we did this, we did use it as a tool. We did also, Jason and I went out and, you know, kind of did a tour of all the streets just to kind of confirm what the software was telling us, too. And so, again, it's another tool in our toolbox. And the aerial photo, I mean, that's something we use on a daily basis. I think Grand Forks, East Grand Forks, on their GIS systems, they utilize the photo. So, you know, both of these are really important for things we, you know, do every day.
If I may, Mr. President, if I can get Jason to weigh in a little bit on that as well. We did speak with him prior to this meeting about how the public works might be able to utilize that. And then Carla, if you could, before we close, I'll just give a quick update where we are with our state aid maintenance funds so that the Council could be aware as far as where we would end up if we utilize those funds.
Right now, there is, I want to say about $500,000 in there, but I'm quick looking.
Always while you look for that, Jason, do you want to just say what you would use it for?
Yeah, we, kind of like Steve said, for the same type of stuff, you know, when we're going to do a mill and overlay project, stuff like that, maybe use it as another tool to, to show, you know, if we need federal funding or state funding for something, it could just be another tool that, that proves that a certain treatment or maintenance is needed for, for a street. So, it's a good tool for that. And also recording what we've done in the past, you know, and we have smaller projects around town. Sometimes it's tough to keep track of those. You know, when it's two, three, four panels done here, or half dozen here, it's a nice tool. You can keep track of that sort of stuff as well from year to year, see how things are holding up and, you know, when you're looking back at stuff.
Now, that, that's a good reminder, Jason. Yeah, that is another nice tool with the pavement management system is we can click on a segment of roadway, you know, that maybe was built in the 60s, and it'll, you know, it'll tell us when the initial construction was completed and, and, you know, basically tell us every year we've done any maintenance on that stretch, too. So, again, it's almost kind of, basically its own GIS system.
Carla, did you find that, then?
Yep, there's $720,000 in that fund. However, we have approved other projects in there for the match for the federal funding that Steve has brought forward before. So, I think the total of that is probably about $200,000. So, there's, like I said, about $500,000 in that fund. So, there's plenty of money to cover this, a cost.
Anybody else have anything? Mr. Holmes?
Thank you. Thank you. I have a question on each one of these things. This aerial photo, what do we gain by having that that you can't just pull up on Google Earth or Maps or anything on the computer? I know, Jason, I've been to see you a couple of times, and you pulled it up on the computer, and it's just as easy and handy as, I'm just wondering what advantage we have having to pay for this aerial view of.
Again, Dale, you know, most cities use it for their GIS system. We do use the photo in a lot of our plan production. The other thing that's, you know, with the higher resolution is, you know, when you look at Google Earth and you try to really kind of zoom in, you know, to look at a specific area, it gets very grainy. You know, with this photo, we're able to, you know, basically zoom in and get a real, you know, good view of what we're trying to see. And it, you know, having this aerial photo is really priceless when it comes to, you know, winter conditions, and we're working on plans, and, you know, just having the ability to, you know, zoom in and look at these areas, you know, just things that we could never see in the winter with, with snow conditions.
I've pulled up a lot of pictures from my drivers and where they're going, whatever, and picking up and stuff. And when I pull them up on my computer, it comes in quite clear. But the other one is on the pavement management, then. Steve, doesn't your firm have that stuff updated? I mean, aren't you up to date on that stuff at your firm that we would already have that on hand, or?
We, again, the last time, the, you know, they basically came in and they, you know, drove the streets and did a photo, basically photos of the street and come up with the pavement condition index. Again, it was like 2014. And again, since that time, we have overlaid or mail and overlaid or seal-coated all of our streets. You know, so it's, you know, to keep the software current and have current ratings, you know, it's just something, you know, that should be done every few years. Again, the beauty of it is, you know, with, with the software, like I said, we can go in and I can tell you every stretch of street in town, which year they were constructed, when any maintenance has been completed, you know, and that stuff that, you know, doesn't need to be updated every time we do this. But again, to get, it's kind of like garbage in, garbage out. I mean, if we don't stay up with it with, you know, recent photos and the pavement condition rating, you know, it's really a useless tool.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Demers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would say I'm in favor of both of these. The imagery, having updated information, whether it's imagery or pavement conditions, is important. I know that not only the governments use this, but this is open information. The pictures are, or the images are available for private contractors, private, private companies that want to use anything. And really, I, I think to Mr. Emery's point, you know, the, the free stuff is about as good as what you need it for. But, you know, this is pretty high-res stuff that's able, you know, you can pick out manholes and stuff out of this. And I think on the pavement management stuff, you know, six years of wear has gone through the last, since the last time, and there's been a lot done. So, I would, I would think that that's a good idea. Wondering one thing with the pavement management data that we get, is that something, you talked about it being almost a GIS level information or database. Is there, is that able to be integrated with what Corey's putting together, or anything that, you know, Jason's putting together in his GIS endeavors? I guess I, I think at some point, we need to, you know, kind of, I know Corey's already updating our GIS stuff, but wondering if that's something that we could export and put into that layer for, I guess, I'd like to be able to see it in that format. I would imagine people in the public should be able to see that at some point.
Yeah, that's something we would have to, I guess, work with Corey on. I know Jason and I have even talked about it as far as, you know, when they do certain maintenance activities, you know, there's a lot of stuff that they do that, you know, even myself, I'm not aware of. And, you know, we've talked about, you know, having better communication, at least at the end of the year, is, you know, maybe he gives us a list of everything they did, and then, you know, we input that into the software, too. But again, I guess that it's something we could talk to Corey and see if that is something that could be, you know, incorporated into the city's GIS system. I'm just, I'm not 100% sure on that, Mark.
Nancy.
I'm still trying to work on getting an open GIS platform that would work with the counties, similar to the Grand Forks one. I've gotten a couple of prices. The Icon pavement would be a part of that process, open to just city staff, but it would be a combination. I think it's a benefit for the city to have a public GIS program that people can use to take a look at their lot, see what their parcel number is, their measurements, what their legal description is. And so, that would quite easily just be added as a layer, but it would only be available to staff. But yes, Mark, we, I think we're getting to the point where it would be nice to have something that was open and available to the public and would provide a little bit better service for our city staff as well.
And, you know, I know Corey's been working, we had something up and we had some issues where it had to come down a little bit. But I, my point, or one of my concerns is, I know you've been talking about this, Corey's working on it at Water and Light, you know, Jason, I know you guys have kind of been working on some stuff on the, specifically on the storm side. If we're, if we have three different platforms going, I guess one of the nice things about GIS is some, it's somewhat interoperability. But like, I think we need to coordinate those efforts a little bit, and, you know, especially if we're deciding to make something more public-facing, so.
And Corey's, Corey's is an open source, so it's, it's free service. I currently have a license with our GIS, and they do allow now for more of an open public and the ability to, you know, have more than one license, you know, or person under that license. And so, their ability or our view to, to kind of open that up and provide new technology is the reason why now it's way more affordable and why I'm, I'm now interested in it. So, and it would be the same format as Polk County.
Right.
So, it would be very easy to overlay and use each other's information.
And obviously, you know, as we move into this, you know, if you aren't, it's like a website. If you aren't updating and keeping it current, it doesn't help us any, you know. And I would imagine that specifically for the, the city or the staff-facing side, you know, you guys are going to have an interest in maintaining that stuff. But we kind of, you almost need to the point, or get to the point where you either have to partner with someone or contract out some of the stuff if you want to really keep it current. So, but we kind of digressed from this stuff. But it is important. I think people want to see this type of information.
Assuming this is also available to police and fire, that they may be, may be able to utilize it? Yes. Shaking heads. Okay. Thank you.
Mayor.
Will you catch some unplatted areas that soon may be platted, so a developer may be able to utilize it while creating a plat?
Yes.
Yeah, nice.
Anything else from anybody? Dot will move on. Number two, update of Mindot Local Partnership Program project. Mr. Emery.
Thank you. So, kind of wanted, I guess, update you on kind of our LPP project on Demers Avenue and get some feedback from you. If you remember, you know, the biggest scope of work on that LPP project was to replace the stamped crosswalks on Demers Avenue. And when it was, the original scope was put together, it was, you know, to replace those crocs, crosswalks with normal concrete and stripe them. I don't remember exact timing, but after, I think, the initial approval, it got brought up that, you know, we should look at putting in a colored concrete, you know, similar to what they've done downtown Grand Forks. So, I did go back to Mindot and asked if, you know, they would participate in that cost to put in colored concrete, to which basically they responded, no, they would not. The other issue that we kind of run into down there is the four crosswalks at the intersection of Second, kind of by Cabellas there. Those four crosswalks, and then we have one crosswalk on the intersection of Demers and Fourth, where those stamped concrete crosswalks had previously been pulled out and just replaced with, you know, regular concrete and then were striped. And so, there are two, Mindot has said on those five crosswalks, if now the city wants color, you know, you're going to have to pay the cost to remove the existing concrete and, you know, replace them with colored concrete. So, so I kind of went back, did a quick estimate. To basically do a colored concrete on all 16 of those crosswalks, I'm estimating roughly about $18,000. To add that pigment, talking to a local contractor, it's about 100 bucks a yard just to add that colored pigment. So, it almost probably doubles your material price. And then I did go back and look at those five crosswalks, you know, what it would take to pull out the existing concrete and replace them with color. You know, we're looking at roughly about $42,000. So, total, you know, we'd be looking at $60,000. Again, Mindot doesn't seem to be willing to participate. So, I guess I wanted feedback from you, too, the Council, as far as, you know, is that the direction we still would want to go if Mindot's not willing to participate? One thing, and I'm getting mixed results on this, too, is there is a thermoplastic pavement markings. I don't know that I've necessarily seen them around here. The place where I have seen them is downtown Bemidji, kind of by Paul Bunyan there. If you've been down in that downtown area, all of those crosswalks and stuff, you know, this thermoplastic markings were put down. And, you know, I know people were very skeptical when they initially put them down, just about durability and how they would stand up even with snow removal and stuff. And it sounds like, you know, they've, they've had very good results with them. They are expensive, too. And I've, I've been told by one person at Mindot that they may be willing to participate in putting those down. And I've been told from another one that they're not. So, again, those are some details that need to be worked out. But I think the biggest thing is I'm just looking for some direction from you guys as far as, you know, this additional cost to do colored concrete. Is that something the city would still be interested in doing if, if it is local cost?
Mr. Emery, let's say that we went forward with it, where would, what fund balance would that come out of? Maybe Carla can answer that.
Well, basically, there being that is on a, you know, kind of a trunk highway route, we would be able to utilize per state aid allocation dollars for that. And/or we would be able to use, you know, again, like Carla said earlier, we got maintenance funds, too. So, either of those two funds, we could use those dollars.
I just wanted clarification on that. Thanks.
Yep.
Any thoughts on it?
How much does it cost to stripe? What's the cost to stripe the crosswalk?
Just regular striping?
Yep.
Well, actually, as far as the cost to the city, I don't think there would be any cost to the city. I think the state would pick up all of the cost for regular striping.
Perfect.
Mr. Demers.
Do we need to do the additional five, or?
If, if we wanted to do color mark, because again, the stamped crosswalks were pulled out here a few years ago and just replaced with regular concrete and then striped. So, if we wanted to do color, yes, we would have to pull them out and redo them.
Can you put together a map of where the 16 are and the five, just so I can see it?
Where the crosswalks are?
Yeah, and which ones would be part of the 16, and which would be the five, just so I know.
Yep, I sure can.
Any else, Mark? Mayor.
It may not be a perfect match, but I know that you can come back and tint existing concrete, and it might even wear differently and fade differently. But maybe you could look into that, too, as an alternative, that Mindot would do those that are going in new, and maybe we could come back and tint those that were put in new with standard concrete as an option.
Kind of almost like a stain or something?
Yep.
Yep, okay, I can check into that.
I've seen it done on driveways. I don't know how it holds up over time or anything, but thank you.
I'd have to do some checking on that, but I can certainly do that.
I prefer antique white.
Oh, yeah.
Anybody else have anything good of the order? I think maybe look at, I would personally think just striping it would be my preference to spend $60,000 on that, where we could spend that somewhere else on a project, personally.
Is somebody not going to go into a business because we have striped concrete crosswalks and not colored crosswalks?
We've got to send you guys back to art school. Come on. You, I mean, and just...
Bring it up in January.
Yeah. No, I'm putting it out as, for a discussion. You look at what's been invested in our downtown to create a sense of place, you know, from the additional work to the floodwalls, to the planters, to, and I understand, you know, sure enough, you could say, well, ain't that enough? Can't we just have regular cement? Those crossings with the stamped, I know they have not held up well, but they really did create a nice distinctive look that, that to me ties together. You have businesses here, you have businesses there, and that, that strong pedestrian link really does connect the whole thing. A nice, kind of makes it feel more of a walkable downtown. Otherwise, it's just a place where cars go ripping through and, and doesn't really have the right connection between businesses and everything. I know I'm sounding a little artistic here, but I know they were very intentional with some of those design elements. And if we could bring them back to some degree, I would like to see it, if it doesn't have to break the bank.
I'm assuming that doesn't include the crosswalk or full crosswalk between River Cinema and Cabellas?
These costs do include that crosswalk?
But the good news is the 16 are only $18,000. I mean, only, it's real money. But if you could come back and tint the remaining five for $4,000, now you've got that total cost, you're way less than half of what we're starting at, right? So, it's those five that you take out and replace that create two-thirds of the cost. But the 16 would come in at a third of the cost. And then if we could tint the existing ones. So, I'd like to see that as an option.
I will, yeah, I'll do some checking. I'm assuming, would you still be interested in the, looking at more into the thermoplastic pavement markings if Mindot was willing to participate in that?
I did a quick search of thermoplastic pavement markings, and those can take on a variety of forms.
Yes.
You can actually have them look like pavers. I'm not saying we're going to, but I mean, that's, depending on cost, they can go in and actually look like pavers with the white stripes on each side, or however you want to do it. So, if that isn't crazy, it's worth a look.
Okay. I will try to get some more information, hopefully for the council meeting for next week, then.
Sounds good, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks. Number three, discussion on lot in the south end of the city. I know Mr. Holmes has this. I know Mr. Gallsted has an update on this. So, maybe if Mr. Gallsted wants to go first on this, and then if there's any questions for him, by all means.
Thank you, Mr. President and Council. I did have an opportunity to speak with the property owner, Joanne. First of all, she was very apologetic and asked me to relay that to you. She understood that this was taken care of earlier in the summer. She has not been back due to the fact that her husband passed away. When I brought this up to her, she indicated that she would have, the two primary issues that I was dealing with were the brush woodpile on the southeast corner of the property and cutting back the hedge along Bigland Road, which is obstructing the sidewalk. She indicated that she would be talking to her, I guess for lack of a better word, caretaker today after I talked to her. And she indicated that she would have that done this week. And if it was not done by him this week, that she would make the trip from St. Paul to come and make sure that it was done this weekend. So, hopefully, the two primary concerns that we have regarding the woodpile and the obstruction can be taken care of. Again, she did indicate she thought it had already been done. She's paid the caretaker to trim the hedge, and she thought that that was, that was done as well. She also thought that when the brush was done, that it previously on the backside of the lot, on the alley, that that brush pile, woodpile was removed. I do want to just let everybody know that I did go over there, parked on the lot, locked the lot, and there's been a multiple of different individuals that have helped out between the city and the neighborhood. the city, the neighbors, and, and their caretaker. But that property regarding maintenance, grass cutting, and forestry looks better than it has in years. So that's my update. I don't know if anybody has any other questions, but I told her that I would contact her whether or not it was done this week and, and on Friday.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else have anything this time? Mr. Mayor.
Just one more thing. Ron, thank you so much for the removal of the big tire pile. I know you've been working diligently with the property owner and the tenant on the, on the north end along Highway Two coming in, Two Twenty coming into town right there, and that whole entrance looks so much better with that gone. I just want to thank you for your, your follow-through. I know it's taken a good bit of effort, and also thanks to the property owner who took action to get that looking good. Looks really, really good.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. I do want to shout out to Judd Staus because immediately after I talked to him the second time, he got ahold of it. He got it done the very next day, and it was very quick in doing so. So thank you, Mr. Staus.
Thank you. If not, anything else, I'll entertain a motion adjourned.
Move.
By reappeal.
Second.
Second bag of house. So hold in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion is carried, meeting is adjourned.